The Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting to order. And first on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to ask Trish if you would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure, if I can unmute myself. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicely done.
Thank you. Hi, Annette.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good. Good to see you again.
Likewise.
So moving on to item number two, audience comments. Any topics that are not on the agenda that anybody wants to talk about tonight? All right, seeing none, let's move on to number three. And that would be the approval of the minutes from the January 13th meeting. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 13th meeting.
Second.
All right, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none, I guess we just approved them. Alrighty, we're up to, is Nick here? Oh yeah, there you are. Number four, business items. And A is a public meeting for the draft for downtown county campus subarea plan. Is Nick or Carrie going to speak on this?
Sorry, I'm just sitting down at the desk here. So the item on tonight's meeting is a required public meeting to review the draft EIS for the downtown county campus subarea plan. We've been talking about this project for going on a year now. And tonight, we have Jeff Foster and Rich Chapansky from GGLO and EA respectively, to talk about the subarea plan. And I also see that Mitch is here. I don't know whether Jeff or Mitch is going to lead the presentation, but I will turn it over to whichever one of you wants to go.
That would be, that'd be me, Nick.
Thank you.
And can you give me ability to share my screen?
Carrie, can you do that?
Is Carrie still here? Oh yeah, there you are. Sorry. I'm trying to, Nick, I think, I don't think I see the option for it.
Can you? I have, I have it.
You do? Good, okay. I did it.
Everybody see the screen?
Yes.
All right, very good. Well, thank you for the introduction there, Nick. I am Mitch Patacek, architect and planner with GGLO. And I'm joined here, as Nick mentioned, by Jeff Foster, Principal of GGLO, and Rich Chapansky, and Jeff Ding with EA Engineering. Scientists and I'm always blinking on the rest of their name, but EA Engineering, and they are the ones that are conducting the EIS to complement the proposed subarea plan. So I'm going to give a brief overview of the draft subarea plan. And then I will turn it over to Jeff to describe the, Jeff Ding, to describe the EIS process. And then we'll have time for any public comment at the end of that. So just a quick recap of where we're at's timeline schedule wise. As Nick mentioned, it's, it's been a year now since we kicked off the project. We kicked off the project end of January last year. And the beginning, first few months was really data gathering and background research and completing a economic analysis of the study area. And things were delayed some over the summer, of course, with COVID closures and restrictions. But we completed an online survey in June and July. We had about 70 some responses to that survey. And then in the September, we presented the results of that survey as well as really the first public kickoff of the subarea plan and the EIS scoping. And then the fall was focused primarily on development of this draft subarea plan and the draft EIS document. We met with the city council at their work session in November. We are currently in the public comment period for the draft EIS. And we're anticipating at least two more public meetings this spring before the assumed adoption, which needs to occur before June. And so there will be additional opportunities for public comment at that time. In addition, information has been posted on the city website for public review and in comment. And we've also participated in a number of stakeholder and outreach meetings and conversations, meetings with, more than a half dozen meetings with various stakeholders, mostly government stakeholders, but also interested property owners in the area. So just a quick kind of overview, just to wrap everyone's head around the subarea plan. It's really broken into three chapters. The overview, the existing conditions, and then the goals, vision, and alternatives. That's really the recommendation portion of the subarea plan, section three. And that's what I'm going to focus this discussion on tonight. So recap of the study area. You can see in light red and purple, the existing downtown plan center and county campus plan center as designated in the current comp plan. And then the dashed red line is the overall study area. This was determined through an analysis of a number of different options for a study area, both working with requirements from Puget Sound Regional Council, as well as the goals of the city for where development may occur and where we want to potentially focus redevelopment from the options you see on the bottom right here, including the original plan centers. The selected eventual plan is a combination of, of really plans two and three. And part of this was done really to broaden the study area that we looked at, such that we could always go back and look at a smaller area to apply recommendations to. But we wanted to make sure we expanded and looked at more holistic approach to, to neighborhoods outside of just the downtown and in the county campus. Again, as I, as I referenced earlier, Heartland Group out of Seattle had conducted a economic analysis this spring. And part of that was creating a buildable lands analysis and really looking at where we think development may occur. This project isn't, the subarea plan isn't being done to support any specific development, but really looking at where redevelopment may occur and how do we plan for that future redevelopment within the study area. And so what you're seeing here is parcels that through their analysis are most likely to be redeveloped in the future. And this is based on a number of criteria such as whether or not they are zoned for commercial use, but are currently single family. That also includes vacant parcels. And parcels where the assessed value of improvements is, is less than 50% of the overall assessed value. This is helpful for us to start to look at not just where we want development to occur, but also where development most likely will occur as it's driven economically. So getting into section three, I'm gonna start out going over recommendations, including land use and housing, environment, open space, and then circulation. And for everyone's time here, I'll just read through the overall goals. And then we'll talk through initial concept plans. And then we can come back with any questions at the end. Initial goals related to land use and housing. And these are coming from input received from the city, as well as input we received during that public comment period. So one, develop a land use pattern that is environmentally sustainable, economically vibrant, and accommodates additional housing and businesses. Housing being a key component of the subarea plan with the state grant supporting the subarea plan, which is the goal of which is to increase the supply of housing. Also encourage increased development in the existing centers and along existing primary circulation corridors to create vibrant walkable neighborhoods. Ensure proposed new development is largely maintains existing views. That was something we heard many people comment about, is maintaining views out to the waterfront. And four, transform the existing east downtown from a largely car dominant development pattern to an extension of the existing west downtown area, which has a more pedestrian, walkable character. So part of achieving those recommendations, this is looking at some of the policy recommendations. One is updating proposed frontage requirements to fill existing gaps within frontage requirements, such as at Bethel and Sydney corridors to, and to reinforce those as neighborhood corridors. And to promote a frontage, a more varied frontage development along the east downtown area. This frontage requirement would allow for less surface parking to front the, the street and require for either buildings or landscape to front the street versus surface parking lots. Initial land use recommendations, again, with that goal of supporting redevelopment in areas along existing corridors. We did look at recommending for commercial heavy areas on the east downtown to allow for commercial mixed use, as well as potential for slight increases in development along that Bethel corridor up towards Mile High Drive. And then allow for greater flexibility for development along Sydney incline corridors with addition of, of additional parcels that would allow for neighborhood mixed use redevelopment across from the county government campus. This designation would still allow for single family, but it would also allow for limited neighborhood commercial uses, such as some of the laws that you see there now. And these uses would potentially act as a buffer between the higher density county campus office buildings and the existing single family neighborhoods beyond. Looking at the current and proposed height overlay maps. Again, here, we focused on listening to comments we heard from the public and not impacting existing view corridors out to Sinclair Inlet. And the only real changes here, you'll see on the right, is some slight modifications to extend the downtown height overlay district along Bethel Road over towards Mitchell and a small area along Blackjack Creek. These were areas that the topography of the valley created by Blackjack Creek and in Bethel Road would allow for slighter height increases while not impacting existing views out to the waterfront. This downtown height overlay district allows for development up to 58 feet, five stories. So it's still comparatively a smaller scale and within line with existing land use code of the city. From those recommendations, and this is really looking at what the result is of those recommendations and goals. The existing buildable lands map on the left and the proposed buildable lands map on the right. And you can see that anticipated redevelopment is still expected to mostly occur along Bethel corridor and the east downtown with a few additional parcels along Sydney incline corridors across from the county government campus. And the parcels in green are those that there are potential pipeline projects. The one project on Bay Street is going forward. The county campus is planning for additional expansion and redevelopment as well as the Community Events Center and some related proposed redevelopment located at the corner of Bay Street as well. Related to environment, open space goals include provide increased pedestrian access and recreational opportunities at the waterfront. This might include things such as additional areas where access could be provided through armoring down to the waterfront, potential kayak dock or other trail improvements along the waterfront, including an extension of the current waterfront trail. Plan to mitigate flooding during high tide as a result of sea level rise. Incorporate new open spaces within the required shoreline buffers, such that they can serve dual purposes, such as allowing for mitigation for flooding, as well as providing open space during drier times, dryers, our dryer, excuse me, our dry season, and improve safety and security along existing open spaces and around Blackjack Creek. Moving on to the circulation access and parking high level goals. Improve bay and Bethel corridors, such that they're safer for all users and that they define a place rather than, that they, that it works to define a place rather than act as a highway through the downtown. Ensure adequate parking is available to support Marina and downtown businesses to thrive, but also promoting a walkable main street character. Encourage development in the west downtown to face the waterfront. Provide improved pedestrian circulation within west downtown between the waterfront and Prospect Street. Yeah. Hillside above. Again, transform the existing east downtown from a largely car dominant development pattern to an extension of the existing walkable downtown to the west. Discourage new development from locating parking between the development and the waterfront. And encourage the replacement of the existing Bay Street sidewalk marquee in the west downtown. On this page, you see some precedent concept imagery of what some of these streetscapes might look like. On the left upper page, these are proposed Wooneriff and a proposed waterfront street concept, which is being recommended between Harrison and Frederick Street for a new waterfront street, which I'll show in a later slide. And in the bottom left is a concept image for potential Mitchell Street extension through the, through the east downtown to the waterfront. And then again, on the lower right, is there a proposed cross sections of that new waterfront street? Beyond those larger area goals, we looked at potential targeted redevelopment within the broader subarea and broke it down into the west downtown, the east downtown, and the county government campus. Within the west downtown, some of the broader goals here is to encourage kind of working from, from left to right here on the screen. Encourage new development to frame a gateway into the heart of the downtown as one enters from the west. Encourage pedestrian scaled finer grain development that excuse me, I've lost my track. Encourage improved waterfront connections from Bay Street up the hill. And that would include a proposed hill climb, either aligned with Port Street up to Prospect or aligned with Orchard Street up to Prospect and proposing pedestrian crossing improvements along Bethel Street. And then for Orchard and Port Street to be converted to pedestrian plazas with, for improved access across Bay Street and continuing on to the waterfront, terminating in a waterfront plaza feature. Reducing or reconfiguring the Marina parking to reduce the impact of waterfront parking and return more of that space to pedestrian use. The conversion of Frederick Street to a one way street, or excuse me, to a two way street from a one way street to provide primary access to Marina for drop off and pickup. And then also connection for this proposed new waterfront street. We're showing proposed redevelopment in the block between Frederick and Sydney Street, such that new development would not just, would not only front Bay Street, but also provide a frontage on the waterfront rather than current redevelopment, which largely turns its back on that waterfront. Here's a, just a larger detailed plan, where again, you get a better sense of the proposed hill climb and pedestrian corridors on Port Street and Orchard Avenue. And again, that shared street between Frederick and Sydney. This is proposes a slow street that would potentially be curbless and allow for some parking, but really provides a front door for activity on the waterfront and the street that could potentially be closed down for different activities on weekends as they are programmed. Looking at the east downtown. Again, as you see this dark line here, this is signifying the recommendation for a Bay and Bethel Street corridor plan to improve street frontage improvements, vehicle circulation improvements at intersections that were identified in the EIS, as well as pedestrian crossing improvements. There's a number of gaps within the current streetscape where sidewalks and are, don't continue throughout the study area. Additionally, encourage finer, finer grain redevelopment within this area that better utilizes the waterfront as a site asset and breaks up the existing large parcels by reconnecting them to the existing neighborhood, such as the previously mentioned proposal to extend Mitchell Street with pedestrian access and vehicle access across Bay into the waterfront. At the existing auto dealership site, the idea of a loop street and development that reinforces views out to the water, potential, including a passeo or a park walk also out towards the water and a development pattern that rather than turning its back on the water, again focuses views and connections to that waterfront. Lastly, looking at the county government campus area. We didn't assume a lot of redevelopment in this area. Rather, looked at analyzing the initial concept for the county campus expansion. And then again, as mentioned earlier, encouraging additional mixture of uses along Sydney incline streets as that potential buffer between the higher density, more intensive county campus and courthouse and the stable, single family residential neighborhoods beyond Sydney incline. Lastly, just touch on the alternatives before I turn it over to Jeff to talk about the EIS. Because the subarea plan was due to the scale of the study area and future uncertainty about redevelopment. Really, the, the subarea plan wasn't done for a specific developer, our specific development. What we've done is we've taken the recommendations and the assumed buildable land capacity. And we've applied a programmatic approach for the three alternatives that were then analyzed within the EIS. And those alternatives being one, the no action alternative. And again, this doesn't mean that act, that development wouldn't occur. It's just that development would occur outside of any of the recommendations included within the plan. Alternative two is more of a residential focused redevelopment scenario. And alternative three, a mixed use focus redevelopment scenario. And at the bottom of the screen, you can see the different assumptions between those various scenarios where existing assumptions, again, looking at a 20 year redevelopment timeline of assuming a little over 1,000 units of residential, 1,600 and alternative two, and just under 1,300 in alternative three. And with that, I will turn it over to Jeff Ding to talk about the EIS.
Thanks, Mitch. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Ding. I'm with EA Engineering. And we were, we were tasked with assisting the city and putting together this draft EIS document. The draft EIS was issued on January 19th, so about two or three weeks ago. As Mitch mentioned, the, the subarea plan includes three alternatives. And we analyzed each of those three alternatives in the draft EIS across several elements of the environment. Alternative one being the no action. Alternative two being more of a residential focus. And alternative three being more of a mixed use development focus. The EIS includes analysis of several elements of the environment. As noted there below on the slide, first of which was land use and relationship to plans and policies. These policies, including state, county, city, and other relevant land use policies that are, that are included. We analyzed the subarea plan alternatives across housing, population, and employment potential impacts for those aesthetics and visual resources were analyzed, including aesthetic compatibility, view shed, and lighting glare. We looked at transportation impacts, both motorized and non-motorized impacts. Public services were analyzed, including police, fire, and emergency medical services and schools. And finally, we looked at utilities, which included water, sewer, and stormwater. And if we go to the next side slide. The, the EIS is, is what's termed as a planned action EIS. And basically, the EIS document provides an inject objective impartial evaluation of the potential impacts that could occur under the alternatives that were analyzed here in this document and the subarea plan. Its purpose is to be used as a planning tool by the city and other agencies and the public as they make their overall decision on the project itself. The document identifies potential impacts, mitigation measures, and significant unavoidable adverse impacts that could occur under the alternatives. And the planned And the planned action EIS and ordinance is basically a way to have environmental review for a specific area. Completed before more site-specific development permits are submitted to the city. The purpose of this draft EIS meeting is to receive public comments on that document that was issued last month. Here today, you're able to provide oral comments here at the, at the meeting here. There's also the ability to submit comments either written by. Standard mail or email comments that can be submitted to the city. Those comments would need to be submitted by the end of the comment period deadline for the draft EIS, which is February 18th. So a little over two weeks away. The comments that we receive on the draft EIS, both here at the meeting and those that are mailed or emailed to the city. Will then be included in the final EIS document and responses to all those comments will be provided as part of that final EIS. And then so in terms of where we're at in the process for the EIS. To kind of kickstart the process, there was a scoping. DS and scoping which basically indicated that, that an EIS would be, should be prepared for the project. And then an analysis for the, the EIS was completed. Which included several technical reports that are incorporated into the draft EIS. If you see here, kind of in the orange area, that's kind of the section that we're in right now. The preparation and issuance of the draft EIS which occurred. It with issuance on January 19th. We are currently in that third orange block there, which is the, the public comment period for the draft EIS. The, the next steps after this meeting are to receive any comments that the public or other agencies may have. On that document, those comments, as I mentioned, will be included in the final EIS document and responded to. And, and once that occurs, that document will be issued by the city.
And Jeff, if I could just chime in, I'm Rich with EA. And just. Kind of put in perspective, I guess, or how the EIS analyzed impacts. As Mitch indicated. We're looking at numbers for three different scenarios. Number one is the no action, which means development continues under the existing zoning. Alternative two is development under the subarea plan with the residential focus. And alternative three is development under the subarea plan with the mixed use focus. So the identification of impacts are the changes that occur between alternative one. Which is development, but not under the subarea plan versus the two subarea plan alternatives. And just to kind of put it in perspective as far as what the analysis assumed. For. Alternative to the residential focus. The total population change between no action and alternative two is 612 people. And for the mixed use focus, it's 77. So you know, these really aren't huge changes in population. In employment, alternative two, which is the residential, has a 221 employees, more than under the no action. And alternative three has just under 500 additional employees in the year 2040, which is the, the planning year. So, so those are the, the type of numbers that are utilized to analyze the impacts. To public services, you know, how many more students will there be going to the schools? How much more demand will there be for water? How much more demand on sewer will there be? So those are the numbers that drive what the impact analysis shows in the EIS. And chapter one of the EIS provides a summary. So if you're just want to get a quick understanding, chapter one shows that. And then it's got a summary of the impacts and then the mitigation. Chapter two provides a fairly big. Really robust description of the project and the alternatives. And then, and then chapter three includes the more detailed environmental analysis that's summarized in chapter one. So Carrie, do we, are we gonna take comments now or? If anybody wants to comment?
I think that would be the appropriate point for that to take comments and questions from the people in our audience. Thank you. So does anybody have any questions or comments?
We just wanted to make a small comment about this. We live in the community and we are right in the heart of all this planning and all that. For, for one thing, we really appreciate what everybody is, has been trying to do in the community to develop this area. And second thing, we have been, since we live in here day to day. We see a lot of demographic changes in the community, which. Most people may not be aware of. There are a lot of younger families with fam, with children and, or planning on having children. They are moving in the community and it's kind of has been very nice since 2005. We've been in the community, we, we noticed a drastic change in the, in the demographic. And it's, it's kind of a nice thing to see how the community is growing right in front of us. And we see the changes in a good way is taking place. So. That was a comment we wanted to share with the folks in here and let you know that how much we are appreciative about. Everybody working hard to make it even better. So. That's all.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you do me a favor though, because we can't see who you are. Can you just state your name, please?
My name's Anne Wiggins.
Thank you.
So my question is, I think it's hard for me to tell because the map doesn't have street names. And I'm relatively new to the area, so not familiar. With the layout without the names. I think I'm within the 800-foot radius and I'm not clear. How this, what the impacts will be to me specifically.
Can, can you provide your address, please?
Sure, I'm at 1147 Sydney.
Okay, so Mitch, I believe that is right near Melcher and Sydney and is just south of the subarea. So inside the 800-foot radius and outside of the subarea plan. So my understanding and correct me if I'm wrong, but there is no change proposed to this property that far to the south.
I don't know. That's what I'm trying to figure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking Mitch to confirm that for me.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
The plan ends right there at Givens Center.
Okay.
I think at Kendall and Sydney. And so there are no zoning changes or other regulatory changes proposed. Down all the way at Melcher.
Well, Melcher is directly across from me.
Right, right. So Sydney and Melcher is, is a full block and a half or a full block south of the planning area.
Okay, so then the impact for me is essentially additional traffic or traffic delays. Access through the downtown area, which I frequently go down Sydney to Bay Street. Can, can you explain a little bit more about what the impacts might be? Because I'm assuming you're starting with the county offices, the courthouses. You know, if this is approved.
So Jeff, did you want to take that one or do you want me to, to speak to that? Jeff Ding, sorry. Well, I, I suppose I'll, I'll speak to it. So I, I think the answer to this question is that. The, the existing development regulations that the city has in place. Already allow for a certain amount of impact to the roads downtown in the transportation network. And so the two alternatives that are being considered only have a, a very marginal change to the overall capacity for growth within the city. And so I think alternative B, I believe it was either 300 or 600 people. I can't remember the exact number and I think alternative, alternative three was like 67 people if I remember the number correctly. So.
Go ahead. When you say people, do you mean additional people in the area? I'm more concerned about traffic on Sydney. I, I moved in here during the, the Tremont. Project and the traffic on Sydney was horrible until it was completed. So I'm assuming that any work in the downtown area that Sydney is probably the main point of access.
Right, so the city has identified several projects that are needed over the 20-year planning period to support growth in the city generally. But specifically as a result of this project, I believe that an intersection improvement was identified as being needed at the bottom of Port Orchard Boulevard. And I'm trying to think if there was anything else that was on the, the list. I don't have the memo at my fingertips right now, but. We're going to keep building capacity projects in the city over the next 20 years. And this, this plan is not really moving the needle in terms of. Causing level of service failures to our existing streets beyond what we're, we're already projected.
Okay, things, thing, traffic, traffic on Sydney improved after Tremont was finished. So my question still is if they're starting with the courthouse, assuming this goes through. Sydney seems to me, and I, I don't even know where Port Orchard Boulevard is. But it seems to me if, if the courthouse starts first, again, that the main access for equipment, trucks. And that sort of equipment is going to be down Sydney. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think Sydney is, is a main artery in the city. And of course, anytime you do a temporary construction project, it's going to reroute traffic elsewhere. But we've evaluated the level of service for normal operations, not, not during a construction project, but for how our system functions normally. And I don't believe there are significant problems on Sydney. Except potentially at the signal with Bay Street, which is a state highway. And there's no possibility of widening Bay Street without taking out buildings. So the, my recollection was that that would continue to operate at a level of service E, which. Our intersections are rated with a letter grade like an A, B, C, D, E. And so E is, it's not a great grade, but it, it still is a relatively short delay. And it is something that is. I, I think tolerable in, in light of the alternative, which would be totally tearing down downtown to make a wider roadway through that, that area.
Oh, I, I understand that you can't really go down Bay Street, plus there's the. The steepness of the street going up, it makes it difficult for heavy equipment. But again, my concern, you know, there's, of course, I'm assuming if, well, Givens, you know, with the kids there, there's already a traffic problem as far as I'm concerned. When it comes to speeding. Whether it's a bus or cars. So if we're adding, you know, cement trucks or, or heavy equipment. I, I just think that there's going to be a lot of traffic and I don't know if anything has been done to address that. You know, this is primarily, at least as far as I'm concerned, or no, other than Givens and the Masons Building Residential in this area. Am I correct? Up at my end of the street.
Nick, you're muted.
Excuse me. In our discussions with the courthouse, the, I, I think what we'll do is we'll note your comments for the record. In our discussions with the courthouse, one of the things that we talked about, we're installing, installing. Bulbouts at the intersections to shorten the crossing distance and have the effect of, of kind of restricting traffic flow to slow people down. And so that, that sort of traffic calming design would both improve pedestrian safety and also. Kind of force cars to drive a little bit slower in that corridor. And so that's, I think, good feedback that we can take note of.
What, what are bulbouts? Or I'm sorry if I got that wrong. I don't know what that is.
So when you pull up at a four-way intersection, you will, the parking lane will end and the curb will. Move in the direction of the fog line on the road, the white stripe that marks. And so you bring the concrete curb out in the shape of a bulb.
Got it.
So that it, it, it really, it takes a road crossing from about, you know, 30 feet down to maybe 20 feet by. By shortening the crosswalk from ramp to ramp.
Okay, you know, that's good to know. And, and, and the other, other input I might add with that is that. You know, from, from Tremont all the way down to Bay Street, there, there are no stop signs. There's no intersections and it's difficult with parked cars on the street for people who want to cross the street. And again, you know, with the additional traffic, that would be a concern of mine. So maybe, maybe thinking about, you know, and I hate to say it because I don't want to have to deal with it. But maybe some temporary stop signs or something like that.
Nick, you're muted again.
I, I keep doing that. Thank you for. I, I just said that we will, we will take your comment under advisement, advisement and. Figure out if there's a way to address your concerns in the final document.
Well, I think.
What, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say if you submit a comment on the draft EIS, it will be responded to in writing in the final EIS.
Okay, so be, before the 19th or whatever that I, this is, this is something that's been 18th, something entirely new for me. So I'm not sure about protocol. But I, I have noticed and particularly when the Tremont work was being done. People trying to get across from one side of the street to the other, you know, it was near impossible. And that's something I think, I don't know if in your environmental planning or impact statements that that's been addressed, but I, I will send note.
Thank you.
And then I get a reply, a, a written reply, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your questions. Does anybody else have a question or comment?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Pat Moriarity and. I live and I think it's the blue zone there. I live off of Guy Wetzel and Tracy. And I missed the beginning of this meeting and I guess I'm curious about the environmental impact on my. Address. I live at 1710 Guy Wetzel Street.
So are there specific concerns that you have about the possibility of additional development downtown, like at the West Bay Center or? In downtown, I mean, this is your opportunity to share how those, those projects could potentially affect you.
Well, I just noticed that my property was included in one of those zones. So I assume that that means that there is be some kind of environmental impact on my property. And I was just wondering like at my location, what might that be? Like structures taller than my property or? I'm not sure. What, what, why am I in that zone? What's going to be happening in that area?
And Mitch, correct me if I'm wrong, but so Guy Wetzel is off of Tracy and kind of on the, the very east end of the subarea. But I don't believe there are any zoning changes proposed in the residential neighborhood above the West Bay Center. And I don't believe that we have proposed changes. In terms of the allowed height even in the West Bay Center, right? It's, it's really just allowing for a potentially more of a residential mix compared to more of a, a commercial only type development.
That, that's correct, Nick. There, we haven't proposed any.
That, that, that's correct, Nick. There, we haven't proposed any, um, changes in that area, um, any impacts. Um, Jeff and, and Rich could speak to this greater, but um, general impacts would simply be more development, um, nearby. And the impacts of, of a greater population of, um, residents and, um, businesses.
Yeah. So we, we haven't proposed increasing heights, uh, beyond what is currently allowed down at the, where the Ford dealer is or West Bay Center or the, um, there by Kentucky Fried Chicken. So those are the, those are the areas where you're likely to see a lot of projects potentially in the future. And so you would potentially have a view of those projects, but we, this proposed action doesn't increase um, the, the height of what's allowed or the, or really the intensity of what's allowed. We just evaluated for the po, the possibility that those things will develop and are trying to identify uh, the potential impacts of that development now.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, this is Stanley Smith. I have a question.
Okay.
Um, can you tell me about the impact that these higher tides are going to have uh, in relation to what this development? Um, how are we going to, I mean, the, the tides are getting higher and it seems to me there is a concern there.
That's perhaps a, a good comment for the next item on the agenda as well, but we are evaluating sea level rise as part of our shoreline master program regulations. And so, um, a couple of the things that we're looking at doing are, um, increasing our base flood elevation and making sure that new buildings, when they are constructed, are built at a higher floor elevation compared to, uh, what has historically been required. Um, I, I think that we will likely be adopting the new FEMA flood plane, plane, uh, maps here in the next, uh, uh, coming years. And then also as part of any shoreline permit development, anything within two hundred feet of the water, we are required to look at sea level rise as part of that, uh, permit review.
What about the existing, uh, homes and commercial properties? How do we address that?
Well, in, unless you're unless you're proposing to develop something, the city doesn't get involved in, um, I, I guess, uh, helping people adapt to the changing environment. That's, um, that's something that each property owner needs to take upon, uh, themselves. And we have put regulations in place to make sure that when changes happen, they are done in a way that minimizes risk in the future.
Can you say anything about the new walkway? That's taking place or is supposed to be taking place? Expansion on that? When is it going to take place?
We have, um, we have a federal grant to take that out to Annapolis and, um, I'm not directly involved in that project management, but it is already permitted. And so this sub area plan recognizes that that project will take place, but isn't specifically looking at the, the impacts of that project because it's already, uh, it already has, uh, gone through environmental review. There will be some new pedestrian pathway, um, and sort of some realignment of pedestrian pathways on the west side of downtown towards, um, the Kitsap Bank site and, uh, the Marinas. But that's, um, I think you're more concerned with the east area of downtown, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. So these high, going back to the high tides, I mean, if it gets much higher and we have much, you know, any kind of the storm weather going on, it is going to start flooding and, and then how far does that go? I mean, do you have any idea where, where, what kind of impact it's having on now? I mean, it sounds, looks to me like it's going to impact quite a bit downtown.
Yeah, we, we just, um, did in a, a pretty extensive evaluation of flooding issues related to sea level rise downtown. And so um, that's not part of this study, but the shoreline master program, which is the next item on the agenda for the planning commission tonight. That, that mapping has been done and modeled and it's something we can certainly share with you.
Yeah, okay. I know you're going to talk about it later on, but um, are you basically saying that would be up to the individual homeowners to, to deal with that or the city going to, if it's going to be a, you know, a lot of water going down, it's going to impact, you know, quite a few businesses and homeowners. Is that something the city would get involved with or, or is it going to be up to the individuals that are going to be impacted by it?
Well, we have, we have flood walls in certain areas and we have facilities and certainly Bay Street is prone to flooding now. And so if and when we do a public works project to improve Bay Street, we will be elevating Bay Street above its current elevation as part of um, redevelopment, but that's a, an issue of permitting through the shoreline master program. Um, that's not something that is, is directly addressed by this plan. It's, we're, we're, we're anticipating that in this plan, but we're not uh, taking action in this plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, this is Ann Wiggins again. I have one more question. Um, at the beginning of the meeting, since I wasn't able to see, um, they were discussing, uh, it sounded like drawings of particular areas and that sort of thing. Where can I find those?
Those are, we've got a website. Um, if you go to the Department of Community Development page on the city website, on the left-hand side, there is a link to the downtown sub area plan. And I think most of these documents are on that page.
Okay, I, I had the downtown and county campus sub area plan under, uh, but you know, like I said, the maps didn't have streets on them, so it was difficult for me. But where, where were specifically, um, the references when you were, are they, are they drawings or sketches or what are they? I couldn't see.
Yeah, on the, um, on the website, there is a, a heading that says da, draft downtown sub area plan. And there's a section one, two, and three. And all of the, um, all of the maps that were shown in today's presentation were from those three planning documents.
Are, are you mean chapters one, two, and three?
Uh, it just, the title of the document is draft sub area plan, section one, section two, and section three.
Okay, I'm looking at the wrong thing then. I'm looking at something that says draft environmental impact statement.
Yeah, go to the next heading down from that in big bold, uh, black text. It's, uh,
Oh, sub area plan. Okay. And it says section one, two, and three. Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
I, I would just point out in addition, if, um, you had mentioned concerns about traffic, um, if you click on three point five transportation, um, there is a map of the anticipated, uh, new traffic, um, loads and impacts um, in there. There's a lot of data that is, um, confusing, um, to everybody, myself included, but there's also some clear, there's also some clear graphics in there, um, that are, um, uh, easier to understand and to, to read. Be another place to look for reference.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I have a hard, I'm do much better with visual than trying to understand, uh, the written uh, aspects of it. So thank you.
Same here.
Okay. I guess that, that answers my question. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? All right, seeing none. I think we will close this meeting and move on to the public hearing. So up next is business item B, public hearing for the shoreline master program update.
And I'll just kind of give a brief introduction to this. Um, this is for the shoreline master program periodic update, which is required by the Department of Ecology every eight years for every jurisdiction that has a shoreline or other regulated waters of the state. Um, and so I don't know how many people are here for that. As opposed to the downtown sub area plan, um, but you, it's possible you got notices for both, uh, tonight, depending where you live. Um, and I sent, uh, notices out for eight hundred feet, um, for both the shoreline master program and for the downtown sub area plan. So a lot of these may have crossed. You would have, um, we sent out notices for both, um, the downtown shoreline on Sinclair inlet, and then it also goes up Blackjack Creek. Um, all the way up to, um, SR sixteen. That's where the, the flow lessens towards no longer considered in the shoreline jurisdiction. So all the way up, it's not necessarily on marine shoreline. So if you live on Blackjack Creek, going all the way back up south, um, that could explain why you got this. You know, like, I don't, I don't live on a shoreline, but it's about the creek. Um, so just to kind of fill some people in who may not have been at the last planning commission meeting when we went through the proposed changes to the S and P very thoroughly with the planning commissioners. Um, what we're proposing to do at this time is kind of, I can kind of break it down briefly into three separate categories. The Department of Ecology has a number of updates that they, that they require, um, us to incorporate into our SMP which are primarily things that have been updated at the state and federal level over the past few years, um, changes to state statute and law. Um, FEMA updates to the mapping, to FEMA, FEMA flood plane maps, things of that nature, other federal requirements. Um, all of those just need to be incorporated into our SMP to be therefore consistent with state and federal law. So we've put those into our plan as required. And then we've also, um, gone through our own, uh, city codes, policies and plans to make sure that our SMP is internally consistent with our zoning code, with our comprehensive plans, with our other policies, with our, our, our maps that we have in place. And we've made sure that we've brought everything in our SMP up to date there as well. And then we've also gone through to make sure that where we've, we've had errors and omissions in the past that we have fixed those. So what we've presented and what we've had it out in the, for public review for about the last five or six weeks on our website is that updated SMP document, um, which also includes a couple of updates to our shoreline maps, um, just to keep them consistent uh, with our zoning and comprehensive plan maps and, um, updates to a couple of appendices, again, just to kind of keep everything up to date. We really haven't proposed any very significant changes with this round of updates. The last time that we had a significant update to the plan was in, um, twenty fourteen, that was a complete rewrite of the plan. And that's not what we're doing this time around. This is just every jurisdiction has been required to look at their plan, assess it for compliance with state requirements and just do usually minor updates as necessary. We will probably be looking at our SMP again in a couple of years when we, um, update our comprehensive plan. And that's the point at which we may be opening this up back again to make sure that we are once again consistent with an updated comprehensive plan and updated critical areas ordinance, which deals with, um, how the city regulates and permits activities in wetlands, streams, um, geo hazard areas and things like that. That's a much more comprehensive update of our environmental requirements. And that's when we may come back to the SMP. But for right now, we're just looking at the, the things that we have to do just to be compliant with state law. Um, and to keep us up to date on all of our regulations. So um, I can walk back Annette, um, through any of the issues that the planning commission had, may have had any questions about from our previous discussion. Um, or I can go back through the main issues, um, in which we focused our updates and, uh, it might be more helpful for the public if I just focused on where our major amendment areas were, unless you had any specific questions or any of the other commissioners had questions they wanted to ask at the outset. And then we can hear from the public for their questions and comments. Annette, what would you prefer?
Um, will you say that again?
I'm sorry.
I was just reading this and I wasn't paying attention.
That's okay. I was just saying if you or any of the commissioners had any specific questions um, at this point, if you wanted me to go over anything in particular, especially from the last meeting, I'd be happy to do that at the outset, or if you just want me to walk through, um, give like a, a brief summary for the public of the main, um, issues, and then we can hear from the public.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's just walk through it.
Okay. I won't go through, um, the issues that, that we have kind of looked at in regards to keeping up with state and federal requirements. Most of those are kind of obscure and are just requiring us to make sure that we say this, say that about, you know, this federal requirement is incorporated. Um, we've brought this reference in state law up to date. So I'll just, I'll just walk through the things that we thought were the most significant amendments that we're calling out, um, in our plan. Um, let's see, um, we've corrected references to our critical areas ordinance, which as I just said, is the section of our code that, um, regulates how we deal with things like wetlands and streams and other sensitive environmental features. Um, we, uh, revised our critical areas ordinance in twenty seventeen, but we did not revise our SMP at that time. And so what happened is when that went into a completely different section of code, um, our SMP then fell out of, fell behind and we kept referring to an old section of code that no longer existed. That's a problem. And so we've now corrected that. So the SMP refers to the critical areas ordinance by the correct code title and refers to all of the updated protective language as well, which it did not before. We were going by a very old critical areas code and requirements that were very outdated. So that brings us up to date for environmental protection in that regard. Um, we have updated our series of shoreline maps. This is in appendix A. So that the environmental designations, um, of the areas along the shoreline and uh, remember the shoreline jurisdiction is only two hundred feet in from the ordinary high watermarks. This is a very narrow band along our Sinclair inlet shoreline and along Blackjack Creek. Um, we wanted to make sure that our shoreline environment designations were consistent with current zoning according to the city zoning map. So we just had to change a few of those where over the past few years, we've had some rezones and changes in what our, um, our zoning classifications were called. And so we just tweaked a few of those. So now they're all going to be consistent again. Um, and as Mr. Smith, um, Mr. Stanley Smith had mentioned, um, a few minutes ago, the city commissioned a very comprehensive study of flooding problems along our downtown shoreline due to, um, sea level rise, which is both existing right now and is, um, projected to occur with greater frequency in the future over the next twenty years. That's the planning period. And, um, Mr. Smith, if you're still, um, out here on the phone, I'd be happy to provide you with a copy of that document by email. So you could look at that, um, more thoroughly and get a better idea of, of what we're looking at and trying to plan for. Um, but basically what Nick said, um, we are aware that we do have a significant problem downtown right now already. Part of it's due to king tides and storm surge from when we get a storm coming in from the north and pushing that water up against, uh, the sea walls that we already have in place. We have, we have a problem with our stormwater system even in that case. And we do have some overtopping of existing walls that are already, already here and some erosion, which is being caused by what's going on. And so, um, we have, we have that mapped right now and, and modeled for the future of where we expect those problems to become worse. And where they don't exist now, where we expect them to start appearing in the, the near and medium term future. So, um, we will be adopting a number of new policies um, and regulations in our SMP to deal with, um, sea level rise and flood management downtown. Um, and as Nick said, one of the things that we will be, um, requiring is additional elevation for, uh, new buildings and structures, I think two feet above, um, I think above flood elevation is, is what we're going to be looking at above the one that we have right now. We will be adopting the new, uh, twenty fifteen FEMA flood plane maps. Um, we will be putting a number of new policies and regulations in place to deal with new construction and redevelopment on existing sites. Nothing that's going to require people to do anything about their existing homes or commercial buildings. There's nothing that's going to say if you have an existing structure, you're going to be required to come in and elevate it. Or you're going to be required to come in and build a higher seawall at this point. Um, but when you do decide to add on, um, when you tear it out and rebuild, that's when these new, uh, requirements are going to kick in. And, um, this is something that we're going to continue to look at from now on, um, because we've also put a, a requirement in place in the SMP that says that basically the city does have the requirement to continue to be aware of what is happening with sea level rise and to monitor and map, uh, its progression. So we are going to So we are going to create a map of where we have flooding problems. Where we see it becoming more problematic in future and we're going to make that available to the public. And to potential developers or buyers or just anyone who wants to see how this could potentially affect downtown. And you know, how, how that may affect property values and things like that. So that's also something the city will be working on in future. Oh, and we probably also will be looking at additional revisions to our flood management code. Over the next year, year and a half, the city is undertaking a, a comprehensive stormwater plan study. This year, that's probably going to take about a year to complete. First comprehensive stormwater plan the city will have done actually. And that's going to include a lot of in-depth analysis of issues downtown about stormwater, including flood management and other issues like that. It's going to dovetail into what we've done here for the, for the shoreline master program. And then we are also going to be updating our flood hazard reduction and management code. Overall for the city, not just for the downtown shoreline. So we're trying to get the ball rolling on updating a number of management plans, codes and policies. To be more protective of the city with regard to sea level rise and stormwater management and flooding in general. Let's see, shoreline vegetation conservation. And protection of, of native vegetation. We've added a couple of requirements in there. For mitigation and restoration of native vegetation. When we have redevelopment and the downtown shoreline for commercial properties. We've just tried to get a couple of things in there. These are also things that are actually helpful for store, for stormwater management as well. And we've tried to add some additional options in there for. Allowing. For averaging, a couple of other things to make it both more flexible for downtown commercial properties to be redeveloped. While also requiring that when we provide that flexibility, the city does get something in return such as additional mitigation. You know, cleanup of contaminated sediment, removal of old riprap from the shoreline, things of that nature. So trying to provide more win-win situations when we do have redevelopment along Sinclair inlet. We have said that this is, this is an attempt to try to prevent runoff and pollutants into Sinclair inlet and Blackjack Creek. We're seeing that agricultural activities and uses are not permitted within the marine shoreline jurisdiction of Sinclair inlet and the Astorine shoreline, the marine shoreline. Of Blackjack Creek. This is not saying you can't have a greenhouse or flower beds or chicken house or something like that. That's just saying that commercial production agriculture will no longer be permitted. We don't actually have any of that as far as I know, but it was permitted in our old SMP. And this is just saying that this is not really inappropriate use for this very delicate environmentally sensitive environment. So we want to make sure that does not occur. Non-water oriented industrial activities will no longer be allowed in the shoreline jurisdiction. Water oriented and water dependent, these are things like boat building industries, kayak rentals. Anything that's going to require that your business be on or adjacent to the water in order to function. And industrial means that basically you are producing something, you are putting it together, you are fabricating. You are, you are building something. It can also be resource based, such as dredging or mining, neither of which are allowed. But in this case, we want to encourage our industrial activities that are allowed on the shoreline, such as boat building, boat repair. Hallouts, marinas, we want all of that to continue. But we want to make sure that we don't have any non-water oriented industrial activities coming in and taking those very. Very hard to find spots. We really want to reserve those for those types of water dependent uses. Parking is something that we've addressed in the SMP specifically for the first time. We've, we addressed transportation issues previously, but not parking. And we, we've reiterated that as it stated in state law, parking is not a preferred use in the shoreline jurisdiction. And new parking should only be allowed where there's no feasible alternatives. Inside the shoreline jurisdiction. And remember, that's just the 200 feet from the ordinary high watermark back. So within that area, we really should not be adding new parking unless there's a compelling reason to do so. We've added policy saying that the city should explore options for reducing or removing publicly owned parking lots within the shoreline jurisdiction. We encourage conversion of those areas to shoreline, public access, public water dependent and water enjoyment uses. Such as parks, beaches and fishing areas. And we realize that that's not all going to happen. You know, all of the parking that we have downtown and a lot of that is going to stay. And there's, there's reasons for that. But where it's feasible and appropriate, the SMP is going to encourage that to take place. And we've restricted surface parking as a principal use, meaning that like a pay parking lot. Or a commuter parking lot, just not, not as an accessory to an apartment building or something like that. But saying a parking lot standalone is not going to be allowed in certain environments such as natural urban conservancy or residential. So the only place where that will be allowed is right downtown in the commercial area. We've tried to make it a little bit easier also for applicants who are doing things in the downtown area by. Trying to create more specific guidance for how you apply for shoreline permits. Our, our shoreline permit process in our old SMP was, some of it was kind of incomplete. It said you could get a certain kind of permit, but then it didn't really tell you how or, or who was approving it. So we kind of rewrote all of that to help you figure out, you know, when you require both. Shoreline conditional use permit and a shoreline variance, you know, and maybe you're also subdividing your land. What does that mean? If you require multiple permits, what kind of process are you following? Do you go to the hearing examiner with all of them? And how does that, how does that tie in to Title 20? Which addresses subdivision and other things like that, where you also may be going through a hearing examiner. And so we've tried to, to make it helpful for cross referencing other areas of our code. And making sure that an applicant understands how you go through one process. One set of permit applications, one review, one hearing. So we're hopefully that's going to be a little bit easier for users to navigate. We have also added in administrative. Condition, administrative variances, whereas before that did not exist. Every time anyone wanted a variance of any type, they had to go to the hearing examiner. Even if you just wanted, let's say, let's say a setback was required, you, you had to be set back 10 feet. If you just wanted a variance of one foot, you had to go to a hearing. And so we have created some criteria that have made it a little bit more flexible. You can now go to the community development director, our shoreline administrator for certain things, for, for minor issues, not major ones. And ask for an administrative variance. So again, trying to be a little bit more flexible. Trying to work with people who are just looking for minor changes on a project that otherwise there's no reason it would have to go to a hearing. We have clarified that enforcement on the shoreline for any violations is dealt with in exactly the same manner. As enforcement of violations of any other of the city's codes for zoning or. You know, anything else that is dealt with under Title 20, and that's what the community development department deals with for, you know. Cutting down trees or dredging a wetland or anything else. It's, it's, it's all regulated in the same manner and will be dealt with by the same code enforcement authority. And that was not clear in, under the previous SMP at all. So it's good to have that under, again, one, one process. And then we added a number of new definitions to the SMP to deal with some of the new policies and regulations that have been developed. And just to make it easier for people to refer to these. And making sure that they're also consistent with definitions that are in our zoning code. And appendix E, which is now going to be appendix C, got remembered. Appendix E deals specifically with mitigation and restoration requirements for redevelopment. In our high intensity shoreline environment, and that's all primarily the downtown shoreline. And so we just made it a little bit, we put some more specific requirements in there about what is required for. Mitigation and parking and variances for redevelopment in that area. Tried to make it again, a little bit more flexible, but also to make sure that when we make it more flexible, we do get environmental benefit as well. And I believe that pretty much sums up the, the major topics that we tried to address in our update. I can go through anything again, or we can go, go ahead with public question and comment.
Carrie, is the markup version of this online somewhere?
Yes. Yes, they're, they're both online.
Carrie, I've got a question. This is Gary Anderson. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, thanks for providing some flexibility into the SMP for, for reasonable. Issues that come up, that just helps the public. But my question is, for the downtown area, we've talked about elevating buildings when they're redeveloped. Has there been any communication with the Department of Transportation about elevating the roadway? So that when buildings are elevated, you don't have to step up into a building. It's basically the same elevation as the building entrances would be.
Are you, are, are you asking about Bay Street in particular? Cause yes, we have had consultation with Wash Dot about that study in particular. And they were provided the results of that study. And we kind of were having the well, you know, what is Wash Dot's longer term plan for Bay Street? You know, dealing with the flooding problems we already have, it would be nice to coordinate and to know. You know, what your longer term plans are. And I, I kind of hate to say that. The response that I got back was, well, we know that we have problems and we're going to have worse problems, but we have no one at this time working on that plan.
Sure. Well, yeah. We're probably behind the eight ball with them. I mean, it is a state highway, but and their, their planning horizon is. If we started now, it'd probably be five years down the road, but certainly they need to be mindful of. You know, what Port Orchard is facing in terms of redevelopment. And I, I guess. I guess the only thing we could do is ask for their help at this juncture and participate wherever they can.
Yeah, they have been kept informed of everything that we, we've been doing and they. They were asked for input. They, and they did make comments on the draft. Sea level wise report, we did incorporate comments from Wash Dot into that. And we have asked them to pass on those comments where they could up the chain. And to continue working with us in future as we update our flood management code and our stormwater plan. And that really is about all we think we can do at this point.
And I would add to that in terms of our conversations with Wash Dot. There's a statute that says when the city of Port Orchard grows, it, the law keeps changing by population. But once we get to a certain population, we have to assume responsibility for Bay Street anyway. And so we've used our lobbyist and we've had that, that statute revised, it's now a population of 27,500. At the last time I checked, but at some point that's going to be our road. And so I think Wash Dot is looking at these little spur highways going through towns like ours and saying, that's not going to be our problem forever. And they're putting their resources into the roads that they know will be part of a long-term state highway network. So.
That's, that's interesting. I wonder if, if Port Orchard takes on the responsibility for making the necessary changes. Could we expect some rebate or participation financially from the DOT for us doing the job that they are obligated to do?
I, I totally understand. And I, I think that if, if Wash Dot had the money. That would be one thing, but I think that Wash Dot's got more problems than they can solve right now with fish culverts and all of their other challenges. So. But we can always ask.
I think a long-term payment plan would be acceptable.
Okay, are we ready to open the public hearing? This time, I'm going to open up the public hearing for draft 2021 shoreline master program update. Any questions or comments?
Yes, can you hear me? My name is Randy Corbell.
Yeah.
And yes, I have a question for you. This has to do, I reviewed the red line version of the shoreline master program. And I noted that section eight had quite a bit of edits and deletions. And in particular, the, the exemptions in section 8.3. The exemptions to the shoreline master program for things like normal maintenance of existing facilities. And I'm wondering how the new version, 2021 of the shoreline master program is going to address. The, the normal maintenance that goes on in waterfront marinas and docks and that sort of thing.
Actually, what we did is we, we didn't remove the actual exemptions. The previous SMP had literally filled out pages of everything that's in the state statute. And what we did was simply replace it with a reference to the state statute. And the reason we did that was twofold because it's, it's, it's a little, it's a little less confusing if you just go right to the state statute. Instead of having us put it there and then attempt to interpret it. And also because as the state updates those codes, and this is one of the things that we kept having problems with. Our code falls out of compliance. So if, you know, this year. You know, the WAC is updated and the, the exemptions are updated, then our code would instantly become out of compliance. So we felt instead of putting all the exemptions, just repeating verbatim, all of the exemptions in, in the state law. In our SMP, we would rather just refer to that, the sections of the WAC and the RCW that provide those exemptions. And then they're always up to date. So it doesn't actually change what is or is not exempted from requiring a, a permit or review.
Carrie, because I don't have that document in front of me. Can, are, does that refer, I can't remember, does it refer to the WACs and the RCWs in that section?
Yes.
Okay.
If I can just. Get to where we were in my section. Right under shoreline exemptions, that was in chapter eight. And it previously just repeated.
Such an 8.3?
Yeah, it was, it was just repeated verbatim, everything that's in state law and the RCW and the WAC. As to what is allowed to be exempted from review, from requiring a shoreline permit. And we've just said, you know, those change and we don't want our code to become immediately outdated. Or potentially immediately outdated when we adopt it. So we would just prefer to, prefer to refer you. Go look at the, at the state law for the most up to date version of what is exempted. That way it's always right.
Okay, thank you very much. And so the process for requesting exemption hasn't changed?
Not at all.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on the shoreline master program. Does any of the planning commission have any questions? Don't. All right.
I feel like Carrie's gone through it very thoroughly, especially in the last meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so I guess we will move on to business item C. Discussion and recommendation for the draft 2021 shoreline master. Discussion and recommendation for the draft 2021 shoreline master program. Did we do that? Am I confused?
I was just hearing and now, now we're asking you to make the recommendation of approval to the city council.
Sorry.
And just for the benefit of the public, what will happen if the planning commission gives their recommendation for approval is an ordinance recommending approval will go to the city council. And the final decision on whether these changes to the SMP are approved will be made by the Department of Ecology. And we hope that we will be sending that to Ecology by the end of this month. And it can take about 45 days for Ecology to sign off. We have to have this done by statute by the end of June. So we have some time, but we're hoping to get it in within the next 30, 45 days or so.
Does anybody want to make a recommendation?
I move to recommend that the city council approve the 2021 periodic update to the shoreline master program, subject to final approval by the Department of Ecology.
Nice second. All right, all those in favor?
I.
All those opposed? There you go, it's done. For all the hard work you've done.
Yeah, no kidding.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's, it's always nice when we have the public come and sit with us and share your comments and questions. And I, I have to tell you that having meetings on Zoom has been a lot more. There's been a lot more people join in and it's been really nice. So we appreciate you, even if you just come and just sit with us and not say anything. So we are here again next month and if you want to come back, you're welcome to be here. Thank you so much.
And I had one announcement, if I might. The next meeting for my planning commissioners, we are going to switch our Zoom format to a, it's not a regular Zoom meeting, but we will have special links sent to each of the planning commissioners and then the audience will be put in a separate audience room where they can watch and they can raise their hand if they want to speak. But it, it provides a little bit more control over how the meeting is operated. And so each of the planning commissioners will receive an email before the next meeting. And that email is your link to sign into the meeting. There will also be a link on the agenda, but if you use the link on the agenda, it will take you to the public Zoom room and you won't have the full ability to participate. And so you need to make sure that you check your email and use the Zoom link that we emailed to you.
All right. So if we don't have anything else, I would like to adjourn the meeting for tonight and see you back in March. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.